Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Sunny, great to be here today. It's great that we are all gathered here. It's a blessing that has been bestowed upon us. We do not take it lightly or in the frame of the good morning to everyone and sunny, welcome everyone here. This is our first meeting of the month. As we all know, this is the fourth of March, almost one-fourth of the years by Donald. But we're truly grateful to be having this place. And with that being called, said, I am calling the meeting to order, and I'd like to call Pastor Seaman, if she can come and lead us with the prayer, and you can stand or remain standing. And Councilman Day will lead us with the prayers.
Let's pray. Pulling out this couple of ones this morning, and we give you praise and thanks for this beautiful day that you've given us. We give you praise and thanks for this wonderful community and all its servant leaders. And God, today we want to look at our schools and all children. We ask that you just keep them safe as they face a scary break coming up soon, that they are able to have fun, but at the same time, you then would to make wise choices. God, we look at our servant leaders, the people that go out every day and keep this community safe, our firefighters, our police officers, our EMTs. God, that you give them wisdom, that they can see things that you can see, so that they can come home safe every single day. God, we look at the agenda for this meeting today, and as it unfolds, God, we ask that you are part of the discussion, and that you give wisdom and understanding and compassion. God, we ask this in the name of precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
The Lord pledge. Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the regard of which it stands, one nation, united in God, in the goodness of God, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you. Pastor Seaman, thank you, Councilman Day, for leading us with the pledge. Pastor Seaman, if you have to leave, I certainly understand that, but it will not be having against you there. This evening hopefully, and not the rest of this week, that a person makes me taste thirst. Thank you so much. Proceeding on, Council, at this time, those presentations, one of the highlights that's been put in place, it said, "Thank you to our employees for what they've done in the increments of five years." Thank them, which is two of the most powerful words that you could say, and it said sincerely is "thank you." So with that, at this time, I'd like to call on our HR Director, Senator Chesney, and City Manager Wallace Palmer, to give honor where honor is due, and we are recognizing employees' service recognition. Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As the mayor stated, this is a highlight for us. This is an opportunity for us to bring in our employees and publicly thank them for the work and services dedication that they put in each and every day doing their jobs for our community. And so these are the five people that we had servicing the boroughs for for the month of March. We have Corporal Larry Baldwin with our Police Department, five years. (Applause). You really want to say a few words? Can we take a picture?
Okay. No, I'm inspired, so I'm not going to speak too long. I was thinking about it last night, and what brought me to making it to this five years. I just want to give credit to what it's do. I would like to first off, thank the late Ms. Green, Ms. Green. She was very instrumental when I first moved here, went through some hardships, and her and Chief Smith at the time really put her investment in, and they saw me becoming what I didn't see at the time. And so I just want to let them know how appreciative I am. And moving forward, I'm so grateful for the command stock that we do now now to allow me to grow. And just dealing with everything and being involved in the community. I never came home from a shift and felt like I wasted four days of my life. Phoenix City will always be a special place for me. I'm not from Phoenix City. I was a military brat, I just came through here passing by, and now it's my home. Also, I want to give so much credit, because I would not be here without my squad mates, I would not be here without people I work alongside. And I'm super thankful for Chief Stodger, Chief Warren, Captain Dassler, Captain Heager, I know they don't like it, but Sir McCann. Sir McCann was one of the most instrumental PTOs I've had, and as a player, he's Corporal, he's my supervisor. The leadership and mentorship that he provides for me on a daily basis is priceless. I would not be awesome without Sir McCann. And I'm playing with spotlights on this one, because I know that I appreciate him. And this is a special place. I really did love Phoenix City. I do feel like it may have impacted this week. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Paul, we always say we want you to do at least 20 more. Great for the town that you stay out there. You look good and fit, so it should be a piece of walk into park, it should be a piece of cake. But thank you so much for what you're doing. Thank you for those words. Appreciate it. At least 20 more.
I got you.
With our Parks Recreation Department, we have Justin Johnson with five years of service.
(Applause). Hey, at least 20 more, Justin.
Also, with our Parks Recreation Department, we have our Maintenance Supervisor, David Niles, with five years of service.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide them to you.
Thank you.
I grew up and all playing sports, I'm watching Phoenix City, and I enjoy it. It helps to enjoy what you do there.
Amen.
Thank you.
Hey, at least 20 more.
We had two others that unfortunately cannot be here this morning. We have Cora Drucker with our Interior Fillet Works Department, five years of service, as well as Jason Arnold, 15 years of service. I want to make sure we appreciate you and the help.
Thank you all so much. Wasn't that awesome? I'm telling you, the two most powerful words you could say when you're not sincerely is "thank you." As you may see on the agenda we did have, where we were going to present, and we will still continue to present a proclamation to our girls' flag football team that is so deserving. However, they are not here today. They will be here on April the first. We will give them honor where honor is due, which is a great highlight for them, but also for Phoenix City, because they're just going statewide and national, so we're very grateful for that. So, April the first, we will be presenting them, the coaches, and the trainer, and everyone involved on the team a proclamation. Okay? Proceeding on, at this time, under the City Clerk, Council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for February 18th work session and for February 19th council meeting. Essentially, all federal acts that we do is in one motion. May I have a motion for it to be approved? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and we have a second, second Councilman Board. Mrs. Davis?
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Council, at this time, are there any unfinished business for discussion? Now we begin to the resolutions and on administration. We have Resolution Number 2025 dash 38 to be ratified in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to submit an application to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, AAM, for the Alabama Recycling and Ponds grant. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, AAM, is receiving applications for the Alabama Recycling Pond grant. And whereas, the city operates a recycling program with two drop-off locations for plastics, cardboardwork, and certain metals, and a curbside pickup for electronics. And whereas, the city would like to submit a grant application for a 60-foot by 30-foot metal building to provide a dedicated location for advanced and efficient sorting and storage of all recyclable materials the city collects. And whereas, the total estimated project cost is expected to be $150,000, which is 100% reimbursable by AAM with no required or incentives for match. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City Alabama authorizes the submission of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained there in, and directs and authorizes its mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and provide such additional information as may be required. Be it further resolved that the City of Phoenix City provide $150,000 for the grant to be reimbursed by AAM upon project completion. Pass agreement adopted this 25th day of February 2025, and ratified this 4th day of March 2025.
Thank you again, Ms. Davis, referring to the resolution, Council. It's time I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Green, and we have a second, second Councilman Day. Comments or discussion, Council?
Let me just offer a brief comment, and perhaps a question as well. So, the current location, we just have one in the second district, so with the proposal, it'd be two Airport Road and then one on 12th Street? Am I correct in?
Yeah, we actually have one on 12th Street, then out here on Airport Road. This would actually go with the landfill expansion, so it would just be city using this to store electronics a week away along the road. Right around the city, actually.
Okay. And that's down in the dual lane, you have that dishing, right?
The landfill expansion, yes, sir.
Okay, dishing down, District 3, dishing down.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion or question? Okay, thank you. Now, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council on the Building Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor, city manager, and chief building official, Ray Rogers, to enter into signing a contract agreement with Terracotta Consultants Incorporated for inspection of hazardous materials located at 1004 North Railroad Street in an amount not to exceed $800. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City is in need of professional service for the hazardous materials inspection proposal located at 1004 North Railroad Street. And whereas, Terracotta Consultants Inc. has the expertise, experience, and qualifications to perform these services. And whereas, as part of this project, Terracotta Consultants Inc. will conduct an inspection for hazardous materials to include asbestos and lead-based paint. And whereas, Terracotta Consultants Inc. provide a proposal to perform these services in an amount not to exceed $800. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City Alabama hereby authorizes the mayor, city manager, and chief building official, Ray Rogers, to enter into and sign a contract agreement with Terracotta Consultants Inc. for inspections of hazardous materials located at 1004 North Railroad Street in an amount not to exceed $800. Pass agreement adopted this 4th day of March 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we refer to the resolution, the reading of the resolution, and at this time I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and we have a second, second Councilman Board. All right, Mrs. Davis, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and we have a second, second Councilman Board.
Yes, sir.
Council, any discussion, questions, or comments?
God, is this a piece of property that we are in process of removing, the city's going to remove?
That is correct, sir.
All right, let me ask you this, if we find that type of stuff, how does that work with the property owner? Does it add it to the cost of them applying it back? And how does this come up that we think stuff like this is in some of the old pieces of property around here?
To, anything is, anything we're moving forward, this involves, we're going to have to, we're far outside to do this as best as possible.
Is this going to be some kind of new thing that we're going to be looking for?
It's got my attention, it's got me involved here all the time. So, the cost for that will be adding to what's the demolition cost? It will be included as part of the demolition cost. As far as the layman goes, it's going to vary from house to house depending on the amount of asbestos that's discovered, and how that it might have to be made, whether it's bad, bad and taken separately, or it can be included within destruction. It's just going to be something, it's going to be a case of that system that's down there with each house.
Well, let me ask you this, how would this affect us? Just say we find that on the property, and these people that own the property decide they want to tear it down themselves, and we're not responsible to have to do anything about it, how do we know if I make it sure that they have to do it the way that we were going to do it to keep everything safe down there?
There's a carry on in there for the resident constructions, if individual homeowners tearing and tearing their own house down, having their house tear for down, they don't necessarily have to have that necessary survey done on it, but if asbestos materials are discovered within, then it's supposed to dispose, this is supposed to.
Sure, God. Probably that's all we'll stop to, if that happens, if anybody brings it to somebody's business.
Yes, sir.
So will the building?
During their time, and plus a parent's private home now, which they own, that there's somebody who'll come by and inspect it, how would they know?
They won't ever be, it will really be a contractor to contractor that does the tear down. They're really not as responsible for having, for having that tactic here on hold.
Thank you, Ray.
My question, before this is a situation, if the building department finds out that the contractor's not doing that, then action will be taken against them.
Right, they lose their license or whatever, right? Right, and what, everybody has to be expected to be honest, to know if they find it, they want to be safe, too.
Yes.
So, but I'm just curious, because nobody's going to make them be safe, that if those ones themselves would.
I mean, also, it's going to be, it's going to be stained by whoever they're taking, the materials, the.
They are, if you're.
The horn is going, notice. A lot of those are aware of that.
That's, 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 that's.
Those folks really is, is going to be the side of the house. The biggest issue with this is going to be the side.
It's, 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 forty's and fifty's, you see.
Yes, sir.
Right. But that's a question, I'm just curious, how that would look, maybe this might be more personal, what we've done, or something like that, and I was wondering if it's going to be from this point forward, because it's saying to me that that would be something that we need from it.
It is, I mean, we had to, we had to do it on our, on the other park building, Terracotta Consultants did that for us as well, and then we'll have another coming before, before you, for the building that we own now, to A5.
I know we found asbestos in this one, who we, who we.
Right, we found asbestos in this one. I'm thinking here, we had nice regulations, so from this regulation, it just kind of , you know, down this other.
Thank you. I think the rank, appreciate that. Thank you, Council. Any other comments, discussion, or question? If not, I'd call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council on the Human Resources Department, we have a resolution in reference to claiming a barrier of supply or cost to be disposed of at the city landfill. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the Human Resources Department of the City of Phoenix City has property which is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas, Section 11 dash 43 dash 56 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, authorizes the municipal government body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the property described on the attached listing is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of at the city landfill. Pass agreement adopted this 4th day of March 2025.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution, it's time I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Councilmember Green, and we have a second by the Council Board. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the Parks and Recreation Department, there's a resolution in reference to authorizing in reference to the mayor and city manager to sign a contract with M&M Staging for your Brooklyn system lease at Phoenix City Amphitheater April 1st, 2025 through December 15th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with M&M Staging for a roofing system lease at the Phoenix City Amphitheater April 1st, 2025 through December 15th, 2025. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of $60,000 to be paid once roofing system is constructed on-site. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign a contract with M&M Staging for a roofing system lease at the Phoenix City Amphitheater April 1st, 2025 through December 15th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Pass agreement adopted this 4th day of March 2025.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution by the court, and it's time I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and we have a second, second Councilman Day. Comments, discussions, or questions?
Just a brief comment here, M&M Staging has been awesome. I guess that's why the renewal of certain contracts, we continue to provide and partner with them. Sending this up, it shows that we not only care about our citizens, you know, being out there and having the proper coverage in case of any type of implement, whether what happened, we care about everyone, you know, those that are sending up, those that come to perform, and especially our citizens. And so, thank you to Parks and Rec once again for looking into this again, and I 110% on board with approving this.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? If not, it's time I'd call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council also on the Parks and Recreation Department, there's a resolution in reference to, resolution in reference to authorizing in reference to the mayor and city manager to sign a contract with William Morris Endeavor Entertainment LLC for Sammy Kershaw to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on May 9th, 2025. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with William Morris Endeavor Entertainment LLC for Sammy Kershaw to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, May 9th, 2025. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of $25,000, split into two equal parts, with the first to be paid upfront as a deposit, and the other to be paid to the band at Shattuck. A bonus of $5,000 to be paid if the total ticket sold is equal to or greater than $2,000. To be sent to the audience within two weeks following the performance date. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign the contract with William Morris Endeavor Entertainment LLC for Sammy Kershaw to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on May 9th, 2025. Pass agreement adopted this 4th day of March 2025.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution, which Council we have heard, and it's time I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Green, and we have a second, second, second Councilman Board. Any comments or discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor, could we get, you did lovely with the system of Phoenix City, the city group, this is something finance, it's all yours, we already worked on that.
Certainly.
Now, can I say, if the city group could done it by a goal of $50,000, nevermind, this is a ticket of $50,000.
Yeah, that's a, act, okay, it's good, it's harmless. What is, what is the contract with those, makes the act that's human game, makes them want them up to show, instead of just the city's want to show the act, and the talent thing, actually, well, not waiting. Everybody's in the same mode, trying to advertise and help people, people, that's just kind of a center. At the end of the day, we'll get our money back, once the, once the act is completed, we'll get, we have a set, figure we have size what it costs for us, so once the show is over, if all, if everything is met, and the act is put around and played up like our money, plus we getting out of costs of us, so it's win-win for both groups.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tom. Any other comments or discussion or question? If not, call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the Attorney, on the Police Department, there's a resolution in reference to authorize the Chief of Police, George Stodger, to enter into and sign an agreement with the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Accreditation Program Commission. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City desires to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Accreditation Program Commission. And whereas, the City Council has reviewed said agreement submitted for an additional, I mean, an initial accreditation fee of $200, and an annual continuation fee of $100. And whereas, the City Council finds this agreement to be a necessity for the accreditation and certification of the City of Phoenix City Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, in agreement along with the mayor and city manager, that the police chief, George Stodger, is hereby authorized and directed to sign an agreement with the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Accreditation Program Commission for an initial accreditation fee of $200, and an annual continuation fee of $100. Pass agreement adopted this 4th day of March 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution, and it's time I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and we have a second, second, second Councilman Board. Comments, discussion, or question?
I guess, after we get out, the chief should not wait for the system of Phoenix City yet, the program would take the, out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Day, Mayor and Council. This program is something that's been in the pipeline for about four or five years now, and really, the history of when this, this started with the accreditation was in 2020, and it was a presidential order that required police departments in the, in order to be able to fund federal grant funding, they had to be certain parties certified, and they had certain departments mainly for lost use of force. This was a direct result of the war of the law against any government analysts, and which was the actions there by those officers, was being announced by law enforcement professionals and law enforcement organizations throughout the country. But in order to receive grant funding, agencies had to certify that they have new support policies that adhere to federal state local laws, as well as our new support policies prohibited use of chokeholds, except in those situations where definitely force would be authorized. Our agency met that standard, and we were certified at that time through the Alabama Police Officer Standards and Training Commission, so we met that standard, but to take it a step further, AIP, Alabama Association of Chief of Police, wanted to come up with a stage, potentially, a program to make sure that law enforcement, agency, and Alabama work, that wish participates, were operating at the highest level, highest professional standards, and what that, and we've known something coming down the pipeline, we already, up to the last several years, they've worked on, looking at all our policies and procedures to make sure that they take those standards. So we've been rewriting, looking at our policies, that's something we've always done in all the five departments in this department. That's something we've always done in all the five agencies and departments. Mrs. Chief of fourteen years trying to stay abreast of what what the latest best practices are and looking at case law and make sure we're in compliance. So this is nothing we do, and it's going to be a very easy process, but what what's going to do, what what's going to do is just continue to increase the potential with the law department. We will. Our hopes, our goals are to just increase our relationship with the community, build trust with the community, that we are, we are operating at the highest standard, we hold ourselves accountable for everything from initiative, common policies, everything from when somebody comes to the door, recruitment, hiring, making sure we do proper training, we hire the right people, we provide background investigations to see if there's a type of a follow officer, the general agency and agency, that we leave those individuals out, that they receive the proper training at the state level, as well as the local level, and we need to monitor them, supervise them, make sure that we're doing a professional job. So that's really what's about is professional professionalism and we're operating with the best practices. Aside that, we're doing all, everything we're supposed to do, that's going to reduce our livelihood, reduce liability, but the city, prevent future lawsuits against the city for officer acting improperly. So there's a lot of evidence to it. There are other potential organizations at the federal level that we look at, it's quite costly and several thousand dollars. Like anything at the federal level, there's a lot of, a lot of times, a lot of bureaucracy and they make that very difficult. So I don't have one, something that was cost really cost effective for cities and agencies, but still have that same level of professionalism. So we're excited, they wish all this out about two weeks ago at the chief's conference. And when we move first agencies to get on board and give it correctly by APOP.
But Chief of Mayor, this, I don't know if you noticed, but did the mentor, let's say, about that, is not mandatory? I think it's, when we read my Mr. Plan, I think it's important to, to get ahead again and make sure that we're doing everything we can do to be a very professional organization and have the best policies and procedures that we have. So no, there's no requirement, but I think it's, APOP is committed to improving law enforcement throughout the state. This is going to be a good program for us and for the state.
I was thinking about those small towns and cities, and that's why it's awesome that, you know, a lot of smaller, smaller agencies who are getting four thousand dollars a month.
There's other organizations where you have to have a accreditation manager and the salary for those people is eighty thousand plus. And a lot of agencies just kind of hire somebody to come in full-time and maybe five, twelve years to manage the program. So we're fortunate that APOP has done this and has been a foster, considering it's over two, two hundred dollars, eventually then a hundred dollars each year. This is not a once and done program where they come, the way the process works is to make sure the policies are, are active, under most current policies, which we've already done. We do a sound assessment from current process, we look at our policies, make sure they meet all those standards. Then APOP will send representatives down there, down here to do an audit and actually look at our policies, look at our training materials, look our record, keep them, make sure that we're doing everything that we expect that we're going to do. And that will be in hand over a year, there'll be a recertification process, and we'll continue to look at policies and keep them updated. So this is not a once and done, this is something that requires continuous work to make sure our policies remain current.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Who, who the purpose what they show y'all and teach y'all to be right? Who?
There's, there's a board with Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police and really you have to come down to.
We come down to common, see if all what was done wrong is not to be remedied, but I'm just trying to think, I guess, the rules got to come from somewhere.
What, what don't you record is that, and you write these policies, they're going to look and see that you followed all the policies.
That's even more important, if you can have a policy, really the practice policy, what you have in mind, the policy manuals.
Well, that is one of my questions. In case they tell us something that's wrong, I mean, we still be at the court, I assume, because we ended the way everybody was told to do.
Has this been written and accepted and you follow that?
Right.
So consistency in that, that's what helped.
And that's my, that's my, that's what I asked.
And really, there are other organizations like the International Association of Chiefs of Police and even the Alabama League of National Police that have model policies for the city. We use some of those resources and you have charities and people at the state and state level, even local level, that are looking at policies and making, looking at what the best practices are. Have they checked it from time to time?
Well, we haven't checked it from time to time.
Duty to entertain and provide what comes to mind. Would make you a policy to tell a police officer, if you see another officer doing something wrong or using excessive force, get in trouble with somebody, beating somebody, that it's your job to get in and stop them.
Well, there.
You have to, you have to have those type of policy, you have to have that type of training and, and create, I guess, an environment from your agency that's not tolerated. And the supervisor knows that, the officer knows that, that that's not, that's not the environment that I'm asking for.
Well, that's.
It keeps us a lot of hearts.
In case we get something that would be the correct protocol for the fair, I'm not going to say the rules were made places, but they're guidelines. But later on, if it proves to be, shouldn't be done that way, we, I'm not going to say it out, but we have three forces to say, this is what we were taught, this is what we were shown, this is the way it's done, and we follow the rules and regulations. If they're wrong, they need to be changed, if they're poorly, you don't do that.
That's something we're constantly moving at is reduce liability in this kind of, and that's one of the hopes, the hopes is there for negotiation, negotiation by how APOP or Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation or agencies that are, meet these standards to see if it's lower liability insurance cost.
I know that any time a police officer share, law enforcement's involved, everybody's got their cameras, and you never see the beginning of something, but y'all will see it about halfway through. And it looks like halfway through, the police or chair or whoever was overstepping boundaries, but they didn't show the first part of where we're trying just to be peaceful to begin with, and it escalated to something that shouldn't escalate to, and then the police officers got to stop.
But either with that, Mr. Bailey, they have a policy in the police department that no officer is to start duty in their vehicle if their body camera is not fixed well.
That's right.
They're not detected, and that should never happen. So their policy, if that's on, then.
Oh, yeah, we can back up what, what situation we're in, we have done that. I'm sure that the parks done that everywhere.
Our chief.
That is cool.
Officers are going to have a.
Yeah, they're nothing else. Chief, Chief of Mayor, this, those federal policies, law enforcement, federal and general, have affected the local state.
Like just like this, how this started in two thousand and twenty-five, the brand restricted grant funding, and you did, you complied with these force, the federal state laws, as well as their policy and their position on chokeholds, which, you know, that, and that, that moves that further in two thousand and twenty-five to twenty-four, taking their honor, who's, he was placing a chokehold of some sort by, by DVD, he was selling cigarettes, there were a lot of outcry out there. You know, there's law enforcement's constantly changing, looking at what at the end or problems that, or other law or agencies are trying to learn to, and you don't have that happen here.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Enough comments, questions, or discussion, it's time I call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council on the General Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting and approving the proposed settlement and claims against Master Metering Incorporated and Empire Pipe and Supply Company Incorporated in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas on October sixth, two thousand and twenty, the Phoenix City Council passed a resolution, two thousand and twenty dash two forty-eight, authorizing litigation against Master Metering and Empire Pipe and Supply Company E. And whereas on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, through his counsel, the city has stated a lawsuit against Master Metering and Empire Pipe and Supply Company E in the Circuit Court of Rosal County, Alabama, number fifty-seven dash C V dash twenty-one dash nine zero 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 seven, seven point zero zero. And whereas the parties have reached an agreement to settle all claims of the City of Phoenix City against Master Metering and Empire Pipe and Supply Company E in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And whereas the city council affirms that it is in the best interest of the city to settle this claim in, in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now before be resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve the proposed settlement regarding the city's claims against Master Metering and Empire Pipe and Supply Company E in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and does further authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a settlement agreement and release on behalf of the city. Pass approval adopted this fourth day of March, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. It's time I like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from councilman Bailey.
Second.
We have a second by councilmember Green. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and comments, discussion, or questions? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council on the ordinance. This is a public hearing and a second reading. This ordinance resolve zero point six nine plus minus acre of land located at the intersection of Silver Lake Drive and Explorer Road from R one zone to density residential district to an R one B zone, low density residential district, several channels LLCs to own. The first reading was on the January twenty-third of this year, and we're not asking court to reread this ordinance. However, at this time, would council like to declare this as a public hearing? And if there's anyone that would like to come to present counsel in reference to this result, now is the time to do so. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is children Robinson.
I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson.
Children Robinson.
Children Robinson.
I own the property adjacent to the area that is being composed from the building. There may be sufficient area there to deal with three houses. But if reality is probably there to deal with one, based on the surrounding areas, all the other houses in that area are, are, are not small houses. Houses on Silver Lake Drive, next to the golf course, the houses continue down past Silver Lake Drive. Then with the building across the street from the proposed area, and of course the golf course next to that Silver Lake behind that. So all of the area there are, they're found a way to establish a separate housing, three It's not going to enhance my property, but it's not going to enhance the area that, that where other people were living in that area. There are public, public problems, of course, the other problems can always be overcome by whatever the question development, but we're in a space through there three houses of these houses. They support, if we're talking about an area, a total area here around thirty thousand square feet, that's not the whole other area. They want to have three little houses, six thousand square feet stuck in there. Would rather be complete. You know, yesterday, and council received a schematic of what the proposal is, I haven't got that schematic to public, but that schematic to public has no idea what kind of houses are going to be put in there. I'm supposed to.
Well, Mr. Robinson, thank you for coming forward. We so appreciate it. Anyone else?
Morning, Councilor Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning. The Thursday of the Silver Lake Drive, just had wrote Mr. Robinson here. I too report a long record as opposed to rezoning this, this piece of property currently is on R one. It's a Russell County lot, the lots behind are archery and I understand if you, or you can go, you know, after that rezon, but that's a lean down neighborhood behind it that it borders, but the property fronts Silver Lake Drive and everything on Silver Lake Drive are all on, so I've shown a long record of others. A lot of them are reedown, so a lot of the density is not, not good for that neighborhood. Uh, there's also intersection that doesn't, so we try to come in and out, adding, you know, precious, it's just a, that's all the posts that we want to, we want everything. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Since there's no one else, morning's therefore, and I am declaring this public hearing closed. And as I stated earlier, I would not ask the court to reread this ordinance, but at this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion from councilman Gordy.
Second.
Second.
Lord, sir.
Councilman Bailey. So we have a motion and we have a second.
Can I say something?
Sure. I think what we brought up were good points. Not against Phoenix City being developed, I know we get accused of that a lot, but we're not against it, we're just going to do it correctly, do it right, the right places at the right time, the right structures. That neighborhood up there, it's been that for several years, my father lived up there for many, many years, right when he first came up Silver Lake. And all those lots and homes are, you know, twenty-five, hundred, thirty-five, hundred, four thousand square foot inside lots. I'm sure when that property was originally purchased, it was originally purchased for two lots, and you built two houses on the map. And the two houses now would, you know, look like the others that are in the neighborhood. Doesn't have to be different, that'd just look newer maybe, but they would conform everything. I'm against it in the neighborhood, my own neighborhood where I live, when you start trying to reach a form into something that it's not, and it wasn't when you made your investment and moved in there. Your investment was based on where you wanted to live at that time, what kind of neighborhood you wanted, the people around you. And when that starts getting changed, bound to life, and I hate to say it this way, there's no discrimination against anybody, because I have come on us, one of the oldest citizens of the city. You sometimes can't move like younger people can. I know I probably can't go through the bank anymore and secure. Well, I know I can't move it a thirty year loan, I'll live thirty more years. But my point is, it's hard for me to begin to do something unless you can financially afford it yourself at that time. So you kind of get stuck where you are. Sometimes stuck where you are is not a high, because you can cause a problem. So I hope that everybody now in the city sees it, and thinks about things like that and make sure that that works for what they would want to be where they live, where their parents live, where their families live. But it's a nice neighborhood behind it, it does have a different look, but that's behind it. But coming up that road, I think you still have the same look as, as Chief Smith said, you need the same look all the way up through there. Mr. Robinson was correct on that. It needs to look the same, stay the same. I wouldn't see two new homes built up there and get full bang out of the property, put it to use, do with what was intended to have been done and that when it was purchased. That's what I would consider.
Thank you. If there's more other comment or discussion or question, then it's time I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey.
No.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Proceeding on, council, on the ordinance, is a public notice and first reading. It's a letter of recommendation from the payment commission, public notice and ordinance to resolve zero point two eight plus minus acres of land located at thirty-seven hundred South River Road Street from the AO Zone, Department and Office District to the C four Zone, Highway Commercial District, R and R L M C. highway commercial district, R and R LLC is the owner. At this time, council, I would like to ask the council to read the letter, public notice as well as the ordinance. Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter from the planning commission that reads as follows regarding rezoning zero point two eight plus minus acres located at thirty-seven hundred South Railroad Street, R and R LLC owner. The planning commission of the city of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five to consider the request of R and R LLC owner for zero point two eight plus minus acres located at thirty-seven hundred South Railroad Street to be rezoned from an A dash O zone apartment and office district to the C four zone highway commercial district. It is the recommendation of the planning commission that this request for a rezon be approved by the city council. Sincerely, Billy Sims, Chairman, Phoenix City Planning Commission, Elijah Phillips, Vice Secretary, Phoenix City Planning Commission. Public notice reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to a request made by the planning commission of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five, at nine o'clock a.m. Eastern Standard Time at the city council chambers, Public Safety Building at eleven eleven Broad Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, to consider the following amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. An ordinance, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, be ordained by the city council of the city of Phoenix City. Section one, that is zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and two, be amended so that the following tract of land be located in an C four zone highway commercial district instead of an A O zone apartment and office district. Property is zero point two eight plus minor acres located at thirty-seven hundred South Railroad Street, R and R LLC owner. Legal description, a parcel or tract of land known as being parcel A two of railroad place professional park lying in the northwest corner of section four, township seventeen north, range thirty east, Phoenix City, Russell County, Alabama, containing three point six zero acres more or less and being more particularly described as follows. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard concerning the rezoning of the above described property may appear before council at the attention time and place to be heard. Pass approval adopted this fourth day, March, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard the first reading, public notice as well as the ordinance. And at this time, council, I would like to ask if we take it all in one vote. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the letter, approve the public notice as well as place ordinance on first reading. I have a motion. I have a motion from councilwoman Gordon. Second, councilmember Green. We have the motion and we have the second. At this time, I'd call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green? Yes. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Laug?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, council proceeding on, on the license application. This is a second reading. It's an application for an on-premier spare license, an on-premier whiskey and wine license submitted by A O Y P nineteen ninety-five. L L C's on business as April Follons Mexican restaurant located at thirty-eight point four U.S. Highway eighty west, sweet C, Phoenix City, Alabama. First reading is two nineteen twenty-fifth. We're not asking for it to reread this, but at this time, we'd like to call for a motion. Was it a motion to approve? We have a motion from councilwoman Gordon, may I ask? Second, councilwoman Day. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green? Yes. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Laug?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, on the license application, council, this is also a second reading. We're not asking for it to reread it due to the first reading also on the nineteenth of February of last month. It's an application for an on-premier spare license submitted by Park Market Incorporated to amend as asked to short stop located at five thousand five, some of your local Phoenix City, Alabama. We're not asking for it to reread this license application, second reading, but we'll ask this council for a motion. May I have a motion? Motion to approve. All right, we have a motion to deny from councilwoman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilmember Day. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green? Yes. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Laug?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council on the summary statement of expense under the city clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion for the approval of the expense for Sharon Davis in the amount of eight dollars and eighty cents. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from council. Then we bring, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilwoman Bailey. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Green? Yes. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Laug?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. And again, as always, I thank this council, I appreciate you all, and I want to be a part of it. Thank you all for your consistency and for your forthrightness. Also, we want to thank all our department head of the same for your consistency and letters you forthrightly. Because we do lead with integrity, in morals and character. So thanks to everyone that is here. With that being said, councilmember, anything that the council member might have to take away?
Yeah, Mayor, I want to thank old employee received the presentation, twenty-four thirty-five years. Here, I want to thank them.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Hahn? Anything for us, I want to know, we need to y'all speak.
Yes, sir. Our, yes, sir, our bidding contractor is working diligently on the notice sheet that we have sent out. Their next resurfacing area is going to be down here, Broad Street. They're working on dealing him, but Broad Street will be open. So we ask that citizens be patient with us. It's going to take some, it's going to cause some delays, but hopefully they can get in there and get out as quick as possible. But that one was one that everybody uses. I just want to make sure that we let the citizens know that, you know, please be patient. We'll probably get done as quickly as possible. But then after we resurface, we'll have to let the asphalt set for a period of time, and then we'll have to restry it. So there's going to be another delay in that. But you can't put new paint on new asphalt, which is not work.
What's, what kind of time, I mean, so?
Well, depending on how, you know.
I know, but I mean, as far as, I, I know we can't, but, so, we just need to let the citizens know this to be patient.
Right, yes, and the resurfacing shouldn't take long, it's just from the end of the bridge. But back in towards dealing him, but the striding and everything else is going to take the longest. So I mean, you could look up to a couple of weeks.
And we'll put the temporary slash mark there.
Yes.
Right, so that's the dividing slash.
We will have temporary guard.
So you're saying I need to go fish for a few days?
I'm not saying that, Mr. Bailey. But I would appreciate.
We should have a pond, I don't think you need.
But citizens, and we have been resurfacing in lots of different areas. We're continuing to do that. So just thank everyone that we are able to do this. Mr. Hunter has secured the money that we can go forward with this, because about two and a half million dollars worth of resurfacing that we're doing.
Okay, then.
Well, let me ask you something, I was more, do we also work on Saturday, on the weekend?
Yes, everybody's at their discretion, you know. We can't control their schedule. If we tell them you cannot work on a certain day, you bring it to one, then, you know, they wouldn't. That's on their discretion, that's their business.
Mrs. Moore, since we're on this topic, I think it's a place that I know people have been calling particular cities, and councilwoman Gordon, for that, and let them know, if you don't mind, why that is not taking place, and some of this, most people may be tuned in.
So this is the D O T project. We all know how out of our business goes. So it took us about six months to get the paperwork through the M B O, back to the D O T, and then hire a consultant, and then another, you know, month for the out, for the out doc to actually sign off on the scope of work. So that's been done, so the consultant now is working on the third percent plans. So we'll have to work through those additional steps, out doc, you know, there's a thirty percent plan review, then we gotta do the P S N, and then the nine percent plan review. So there's still lots of content that we've got to take, you know, but that is money that is willing to spend twenty percent, we'll get eighty percent from them. So that's why we like to take those steps. Maybe a little bit longer, but you know, we'll get eighty percent of that money back. So that's that, but in addition, like Mr. Hunter said yesterday, we do have an issue with water centers. There were a block down there, and we are working with the utility department now. We found out that it's probably going to be, well, it will be over a hundred thousand dollars. So the project has to be bid out. So you can now, and then serve our work out there and get back with utilities to make sure we get the proper design and specifications and materials sent out to the beds and rooms. And once that happens, hopefully we can get in, build it, have construction, and the contract will already come in and reserve this, and the coach will work out, and it will be bid for a lot.
Like the project, too, we're a bit off the pitch there. We have to bid it out, the cost is over a hundred dollars, we'll be probably spending over three hundred dollars before we can get that fixed out.
Get it all done.
Yes.
And that's just the water and sewer, that everything, there is some.
Well, no, that's just the underground structure. But it needs, it needs doing, and it's time, but it needs to be done correctly, like y'all tried to do, and are going to do it that way. So if you do it right, yeah. I don't know if I'd like something done yesterday, but I don't want it done right, and it's nasty, because somebody else did yesterday.
And that's why we want to take this opportunity while you have to explain.
See, go to right back there, and have a lot, about every sixty foot down there, there's, there's a house. There's a wall there, so that'd be a lot of digging, it's not enough to get that right.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. The key, if you can. You can. Put your hand down. You know, this, you need to follow the right process again on the agenda before the next reading, and when's before the next council working session, which would be on the, uh...
Mayor, we're going to talk to her before, aren't we? Uh, look, we have so much going on in the city, but so many activities. We have payment projects going on in all three districts. We have construction and building, all this private things that public works and details is working in every district right now. We also have a lot that's coming up. We have B E's making up development. All day yesterday, I saw coming projects is going on, news, stuff lies, some rain openings and stuff is going on, different parts of the city yesterday. So our city is full right now, but there's a lot of activity going on. And like I say, we still remain with shortage of workers throughout the whole city. But it don't matter what party it is in, but some of them are more crucial, especially when you come to the outside forces. But I'm on the boat, I understand that, too, we're doing everything we can. We have a million dollar mark of, on the lead, expenditures on the lease, paying a lot of attention to them, at the same time, taking care of a lot of emergencies that we have or other things that's exposed in itself as they go throughout the city. It's taking a tremendous amount of pressure. And we know the end right fund part, the utility part, that belongs to the citizens. So we will have upcoming changes to that, because in the future, it's got to be taken care of, taken care of these plants. So it's a whole lot, and I know that people are doing the best they can and trying to work, but, you know, I just want to be patient, but a lot of things are going to, we're in a growing city, too. And that's why the places are able to move here and put the private businesses here, because people are here. We sell something, too. And right now, that's about how people go to a front, you know, national front, federal front, state level. There's a lot of changes that is taking place that, that's even when we talk to Polici, that's from Mexico, we're talking about the things that we're doing statewide, local wise. Well, a lot of things from the federal has already been told us, it's going to be handicapped to a state. And it makes a difference, because it used to be set up to where states didn't do what they want to do, federal would come in on. But it just depends on what administration is in there. So we have to be prepared for all of that, too. And for people to understand, sometimes, a lot of times, listen to the world, and the local news, pick up on it, you know, that helps us out as a community. They have more knowledge than what we need, you know, we need to know, and a lot more people need to know what's going on. But on a good note, every once in a while, we run into a situation where one of these department heads or council person birthday, and he comes up on the council day, and we're trying to congratulate our partner.
Mr. Todd.
And this is Ronald Todd, he was his birthday, it's today. He's been here since he was a little kid, so, at my time. So just wanted to congratulate him on that, and thank everybody, you know, we had a former mayor in the audience today, and commissioner, Miss Bailey, the one, you know, I had a chance to talk to her for things, and I think that she was so proud of the building and everything, and had to manage for her for it to start. So I like when people are able to come and come back and see how the city is progressing, and see if we just not spend our will. So thank you all, thank you everybody for that, the job, and the participation in which you're in.
Thank you. I do want to say this, since Mr. Todd alluded to how we've grown. There are things out on Facebook that I heard that because of the closing of Troy University here, that is indicative to the posing that we have not grown. That's totally not true. I would tell you, one year, access assessed taxable values approximately have grown by fourteen percent. We grew by sixty million dollars from four hundred and thirty-two million to four hundred and ninety-two million in one year. But listen, the city has nothing to do with that building.
I don't think that.
It's not, it's not, listen, we don't, I know that I'm giving you questions from reporters and all that, but we don't have anything, that's, that's, that's a different deal, but it's not in relation to the growth of the city.
That's Troy's, if they read the article, they can see all that, it's there. They're telling not only Troy, but other universities, they have satellite offices, have closed thousands of them throughout the country. This is what people need to see and need to understand. Even in talking to the representatives in Troy, people need to understand, a lot of people are going to school on the line now. Even on the campuses now, they have kids that won't leave their dorm room, because they're in the dorm room before they go to the buildings. They're in there, so it's not any fault of anybody, it's just inconvenience of what's going on throughout the world. So they have a pretty important building down here, that something will be done with.
But that's not the first one they've closed.
But it's not, it's all throughout the nation, they're talking about not only them, but it's other satellite source. That's something that's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not on anybody, that has anything, it's a change in technology in the way people go to school, you know? So now, even on some of the campuses, they don't have to make it to where, if you're living on campuses, you're there, you have to go to the, go to school. Come out to the door, you're going to go there.
Right, right. They're not just going to stay at home or, or here rather than going to the bridge or the water building.
Bingo.
It's like everything has been affected by COVID. COVID killed a lot of people, they couldn't do something at home, that they didn't have to go do anymore. Some of it's good, some of it wasn't good. My wife worked every day over that year COVID, I put her office at the house. So she does it at night, she sits there about two hours and does all that back in the time, rather than coming in and saying, which is convenient for her and good for her. But, you know, some people, you know, lost jobs over, but other people went home and found out they could sit by the shore and close the water.
So, that's correct.
And by that damn time, boom, they're going to retire, you know, a whole other city. And push it somewhere else. You know, people are so quick, it's just, it's bigger at times, and that's going to, and that's going to be, this is always been that way.
Yeah, they're so quick to want to blink, something really major in this city is really not major. Troy, I can't believe it.
It's a business, it's a business decision, and it's not, it's no indication of the growth of the city. So thank you all so much, and thanks to our citizens. Thanks to C T V being, we just want, just thanks to everyone that lives in this community, which we're all a part of. And let's all be a part of this solution and not of the Trump. So with that, thank God for this community. We all chose to live here, so we all need to make a difference. With that, we do stand in honor. Thank you so much.